What's up everybody? This is the poker coaching study session. Then we're gonna be looking at ICM scenarios, what to do when off of the field is gone? How to play a range when fifty percent of the players are not? So here we open King Jack from under the gun two, face a three bet. What do we do with our King Jack? Off of the field.
I mean, it's a big three bet, but I'm crying.
Do you call here?
I'm calling.
Yeah, I think falling is good.
Big three bet though.
Oh my goodness.
I guess we gotta, I guess when they go two and a half, three and a half X, I guess we gotta give it up.
What?
I think if we're shallower, we call. If we're deeper, we call.
What?
For like fifty, fifty effective, we probably call twenty-five effective, we probably call.
Oh my goodness.
Wow, that is tight.
Alright, so what are the factors here? Kind of DP versus DP? And then thirty-five big lines?
Yeah, if I mean, if you make it deeper, I guess that kind of makes the three bet kind of smaller because the SPR will be bigger. So maybe it will call if we go like ten big lines deeper.
Why is it, uh, why is it three betting so big?
It's queen mucking it. It's four. It is kind of EP EP as well.
No, it's a four, it's a four bet, okay.
It's pulling a queen. Pulling Queen Jack suited. Ling is ten suited. Mixing folds with the Ace Jack.
Oh, you're just looking at ace. This is asymmetrical. I understand now.
This is this. It's not, yeah. It is asymmetrical.
Yeah, I get it now. And you're looking at a ICM adjusted.
Fifty percent.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we're close to the money.
Can you click it down? Or up or both?
So Danny thinks.
You're not gonna have the same ranges for every stacked up. I mean, you can't.
Yeah, it's asymmetrical.
Yeah, but this hand still would be opening and be getting facing three bets, so.
Well, yeah.
All this, if you're deeper is the question, right?
Well, you'd have to find another symmet- uh, asymmetrical arrangement. You, you have to look at these like we do ICM stuff, right? So if you were curious, you just have to find another.
You can't click it up.
It doesn't work the same.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, alright, alright. I get it.
Yeah, what would, what would Wiz do actually with the stacks if you were to hit the up arrow like?
It may not have the option. That's a good question, though. It may just take you to the next simulation.
I'm curious if we call, if they go three X or two point seven X. I gotta imagine there's gotta be some calls getting in there if they go small with a three bet.
Yeah, it's just a different arrangement. This one's completely different.
Go all in now instead of, yeah, so we can't.
Instead of folding.
I mean, in this arrangement, if they three bets more, I think we would probably be able to call.
A church.
The orange button, I'll pity.
Hmm. You fold? I think folding is good.
Easy fold.
Okay, and what do we do with the hand like King Queen off?
You probably just call. I don't know, maybe it jams.
You know, I might mix.
I don't think you jam and do under again too. Maybe you jam in the cutoff or button?
Uh, he still has. I think he still do okay.
I wouldn't jam it.
I think it jams some way.
I think in game, I'm just pure calling, but if I'm thinking like with my theory cap on. It doesn't even just calls.
Hey, so and then you need to find some call with Queen Jack off sometimes. But that's a worse one, right? Mixing or default? Alright.
Oh man, this is gonna be shenanigans.
Depends on who opens, right?
Yeah. Yeah, shenanigans. This is gonna be like eight. Or call like I think fifty, forty, fifty percent of the time, it's gonna not all in three bet here.
Yeah.
That much? I say twenty-eight percent of the time.
Yeah, you might be right, Danny. You might be right. I don't know. It's
A high frequency.
It's definitely in that region. Thirty-eight, so there you go.
Nice. The twenties.
What is he gonna, nothing huh? We got him. If it doesn't go full flop, we have good chances against this thing.
Uh, symmetrical twenty. Under the gun, I just wanna call here. I'm not gonna push my equity.
A ten is bad against CP, right?
Is this a fold?
Oh, Peter, you're killing me. Can't do it, man.
It'll cost me.
And there's still
Four guys to act.
Maybe. Maybe.
Yeah, it's a disaster because you're setting yourself up to get squeezed here.
Yeah. Not only that, a Jack and a ten is bad against CP.
Just can't do it. I don't have it in me.
Can't bug Jack that's
Not there.
Alright. Oh.
You could, you could probably three bet this, huh? Well, okay. I, I, I'm gonna retract that a little bit and think about it for a second. Like Chippy V, I would definitely be on like the three bet train. This is like the middle and connected gappers are really good, the suited ones. But when you ICM adjusted, I think it's kind of starts prioritizing blockers a little bit more, but it's only fifty percent. It's gonna be in there some, I think.
I think having a nine or an eight against cutoff and button is particularly bad.
Well, you don't think he's gonna, he's opening Jack town off. You're gonna get that to follow Queen ten off, gonna follow King ten off, probably Mike bold some.
I would tend to agree as the risk premium increases, but fifty percent is like
I mean, it's probably a good one because we're very deep and we can go after him and he's the cutoff. So he's the widest and then we have ultimate position, so. You know? We got reasons to click it here, but
Plus, I like the ice.
Might be just a good old call.
I'm a three better here.
Fifty fifty.
Yeah, it's a call. You're right. You should look at the range. I'm, I'm kind of curious.
The nades here against cutoff.
Yeah.
You want Jack eight?
If he's opening off suit nines, you wanna be three betting off suit eights and worse.
Yeah, Pete nailed it.
Oh, we just don't take the jacks.
So what you should, what I would be interested to look at Louis is look at like a forty symmetrical range and just compare this range to that range. It seems like it would be kind of interesting.
Oh.
You can probably just, you had it on the search bar there.
Hang on, yeah, I can do this. Open a new tab from here.
If you open, just click the plus sign. I'll show you. If you click the plus sign where you did a second ago. Um, yeah, yeah, click that. You see on your save, you have Ace King. Yeah, click that. Well, at least they're implementing security measures now.
Very.
So yeah, just open the same scenario, but like forty symmetrical. Oh, I would, yeah, I don't even ICM adjusted. Just make it Chippy V, just to see how the range morphology kind of shifts. I think would be interesting.
Those ranges are gonna be suited sixes off suit nines. Right? So it's gonna choose from eights and sevens to target to the bottom of the offsuit range?
Yeah, is this the exact same range?
Yes.
Yeah.
Chippy V.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, it is.
Very, very similar.
It's pretty similar. What is shifting here? Not a whole bunch, to be honest, like nothing really. You do have a little more focus on blocker oriented combos. On the left, you see like Ace five offs waking up. Full frequency of Ace eight. But there's not Ace Queen, Ace Queen off is like way more popular now.
Yeah, it takes some of the slivers from the Jack seven, ten, seven, nine, seven and compresses them in King three suited.
He, yeah, that too. I think it's, I think it's like we're talking about, like in the past, we've talked about as risk premium climbs, blocker oriented strategies become more dominant. So like Peter said, you're seeing some of the suited sevens shifting out in favor of King X and Ace X and things like that.
You know, I used to think that these three bets here are more like Chippy V three bets, but here it's ramping up with ICM. Like Queen ten off versus Queen ten off, right? It's more on ICM.
I think if you ramp up the risk premium even further, they'll start to fade out again. It's kind of like a bell curve, but
Could be.
Yeah, pretty good, pretty interesting.
Call.
Yeah, like Peter correctly identified the nines. We're targeting nine, so you want worse or better.
Suit the eights.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, easy, breezy, lemon squeezy.
Easy breezy.
Cover girl.
Goodness, what are we gonna do?
Um. Under the gun two is too early to turn this into a four bet bluff, I think.
Are you calling?
I, I don't think I'm, I'm not folding. I'm gonna VPip. And I'm not, yeah, I think calling. If we were like in the cutoff or the hijack, I think I would just jam on this guy.
We just saw that it was folding, right? And then we wanna call again now?
Well, it was a little bit different. You were facing low jack, I think before.
The size was bigger too.
His size was bigger too.
Okay.
Yeah, so you see the activation of the four bet stuff coming in a little bit. Like if you were cut off, you would just be like, oh, you can eat buffet.
Lucky four bets.
Tricky clicky.
Hmm.
It's gotta be fold here, right?
Yeah, I agree, Arnie.
So I, I'm sorry I'm late. What, what's, uh, the drill today that we're doing? Just early position opens?
Just a slightly ICM adjusted asymmetrical ranges.
Oh, it's right there too. Wow.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Absolutely.
I wanna fold, but I
Come on, bros. What are you doing? You're fifty effective.
What just happened? Miss click?
Louis opened folded fives.
I'm a nut.
He's looking for the pocket deuces.
I was about to say, I'm shocked actually to see that.
If you have twenty bigs, okay, you can fold.
Alright, I'm out. I'm out.
I was out before that.
Look at that Joker getting you with the King nine. Who do you think he is?
Ball blind raised your offsuit.
Fold. Okay. Hmm, fold. You can VPip.
Really likes offsuit.
Wow, okay, so maybe I'm making mistakes here. Under the gun two, it's folding?
This is like
Maybe it's because
From the low jack, isn't it?
Uh, the way I remember it in Chippy V, like around the stacked up. I think like under the gun is mixing. And then it goes under the gun. One is like Ace nine off, so I just figured this would be a VPip.
But might change due because it's nine handed.
That's true. Yeah.
It had it, it might be a VPip?
You're right. That was something I wasn't paying, uh,
I just looked at that because we're nine handed right now.
Yeah, you're right, Arnie.
Forgot it. So it's gonna be probably shifted over a bit, so.
Yeah, good catch. Um, I mean, I don't know, whatever. I'm all in.
All in for sure.
I call.
Good call some, I think, but I'm all in. Okay, is that, is this what we really wanna do?
Is this really what we wanna do? Come on, boys. Should he really be folding much though, under the gun here? Nine handed?
Am I really wrong stuffing it here?
Maybe.
What kind of forty chess are we playing here? Like, uh, is he supposed to be jamming tens and nines over us now or, oh, what's going on?
Yeah, probably.
Alright, click, click the, uh, six and let's see what he actually responds with.
King nine suited, Queen nine suited, Ace four suited. Alright, I'm going for the small three bet today with these hands. That's my goal. In ICM against CTG.
If you wanna put your hand in the meat grinder, be my guest.
Gonna get all the folds.
Why doesn't it give you the option?
What options do you want?
Oh, I just wanted to see under the guns response to the, the clicker. Does it have that? Yeah.
He's not gonna be happy about it, I think.
So we're supposed to be taken.
It says screw you, Danny. I'm all in.
I don't like this. Like, I mean, if we call King Jack suited a bluff, why would we like wanna be doing this when we're kind of like blocking one of the few combos we actually would like him to do this with besides like the pairs that are lower? I don't know. It's kind of weird to me.
Like if we just rip it, he's not gonna fold nines and tens anyway, right?
Mm-hmm. I don't think. Maybe he does.
I think part of it is you don't wanna flat like Kings and Aces here against eighteen because the other guy can make up two.
Maybe.
See, you don't get to, to rip.
Rip it in his face, Louis.
Sure, but including jacks in the small ranges, maybe. Dubious.
Is he calling that? Never, right? He has to fold that, right? No, he's calling.
Call this.
Uh, isn't this a jam? Is this still a jam in fifty percent?
I don't like it as much.
Maybe it becomes a raise five instead.
I need
Nah, I don't know. Hold your hand?
Hold my
You doing it? Alright. I'm ready.
It's a big wall, man. What happened?
This is one of those trends where like stuff that you can just pure jam and Chippy V often will shift to a small three bet.
That's the thing, man. That's the thing. No jams.
No jams.
Yeah, Louis, you slipped, you slipped on the ledge, man. You bumped your head.
I just wanted a selfie, man. The next thing I know, man, I
You're on, you're on the fir- front page of the Enquirer.
I just wanted a selfie, I swear.
Idiot Canadian slips and falls to his death.
Oh my goodness.
Well.
Alright, we're out. Fold, just fold.
Yeah, 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 okay.
No?
Yeah, I like folding.
So flat or small, we're both okay with the King Jack.
How about all the cookies?
Buffet's open.
Are we gonna bed them small?
No, don't stop, 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 man.
It's so close. Look at the Eevee. It's close.
Last sim got me like, ooh, maybe we could three bet small from fifteen.
Does that mean we're inducing tens here? No.
At tens, we could three bet small.
It's like you guys wanted to stub your toe.
Or fives or ten, six off. How many ten, six off do you have?
I don't.
I have the Queen four off. I just shifted all to Queen four.
Okay, whatever, guy. Alright, so we are nine handed, but it's still gonna be way too good, yeah?
Oh, I'm tempted.
Close. Vapors. You're gonna have vapors of calling.
No, man.
No vapors. Easy call.
Easy.
Uh, shenanigans?
No, we're the small blind. We're not the
There might be some, some three bets or folds.
I don't think it'll, it's not gonna be prominent. It's not gonna be a prominent part of the strategy if it is. Yeah, it's actually you're right. It's just too early, early position, like look at the five, look at the five, four, six. Look at the other side, though, the suited side.
Yeah, they're, yeah, the suited side has that.
The flop better when we get called.
Oh, we're small blind.
I thought it might be sticking out there like a sore thumb though.
If we're big blind, maybe it has some.
We have some King fours in the ranges.
Um.
Not this early from here.
They were working five.
UTG two is too early, man.
King five. He's eight.
Still fold.
Look, look, man. We're in the hijack. If we're in the hijack, we can start bartering. We can start bartering.
Yeah, I think I'm around King seven from that position. No King six?
No King six.
Can't maybe.
Never, never.
Yeah, maybe some King six.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Probably not. King seven, right?
Eight seven for sure.
Alright. Let's go with that.
I mean, if we're not opening this.
What's the lowest sort of base we open here in ICM?
Ace three or something?
Ace three.
Quit playing games with my chips.
Maybe nine handed under the gun. Maybe it's Ace four.
Alright. Ten, seven.
Hmm, never, never center the gun.
Easy fold. Okay.
Okay, okay, okay. Let's put some money in.
Eh. You can call.
Probably just call.
We're deep enough.
I wanna see a six. Oh. How is this ever? Can we see the range? Are we raising to nines and tens here? I don't think so. Nines and tens are calling here.
Probably calling a lot, I would think, yeah.
Hmm. Sliver.
I guess if we, if we are, we just probably wanna isolate so no one else calls behind or
That's part, that's, that's part of it. So if you're not getting punished by squeezers, I wonder if it likes calling more.
Well, what do you do if you get squeezed with sixes?
Fold. It's already mixing, it's already mixing folds here, man.
Are you sure?
You backjam like tens and nines?
Danny's pretty close.
Look at this. They're calling the squeeze.
Yeah, is the, is the squeezer in real life squeezing what the squeezer squeezing here in simulation?
Probably never.
Probably not. I would like folds. But if, if they're getting close to this.
Eight percent.
Be linear.
That's difficult.
Honestly, this isn't the craziest looking range I've seen. Like I, I imagine good regs can get close to this.
Alright, we have enough suit five for the
From the, from the big blind, but you're, but you're deep is my only gripe.
Yeah.
It's tempting. Is it?
Just call.
Yeah, I mean, it's still my three bet sum, but I, I like it less just because we're too deep. We're gonna, we're not gonna get the folds and
Too deep to call? Like bad implied odds will make a nades. We do what?
I think he probably still VPip.
Well, if we treat that, we have a clean kind of response for the ace, right? If we hit it, we're the best ace.
I mean, this is a good three bet from this position. I just think we're a little deep is my only concern.
I give you eight percent three betting.
He, he's still gonna flat all the aces.
Alright, it's a lot more.
Thirty percent Ace five off, wow. I was, I'm surprised to see that.
It's just the behavior. Yeah. It's the behavior you see here from the big blind.
Hover Ace six. Oh, nevermind.
Oh.
Didn't even think about it. Just clicked right back in your face.
Okay, so let's be wild and imagine we had another combo.
You need to be suited, man.
Ace Jack suited? Where, where, what combo could we have here?
Well, go look at the range. I don't think Ace Jack's ever three betting really. The suited one. You would need Ace five suited. Maybe King seven suited or Queen ten suited if you're feeling kind of crazy.
What do you do with like King Queen off if you face this?
Bro, I just fold, man.
Oh, but what do you think the machine does? Well.
I think, I think you're too deep, man. I don't think it's gonna, I don't think it's gonna backjam the offsuit ones.
Queen ten suited might peel.
So Ace five is the obvious one. I said Queen ten, but it's Jack ten. And then, uh, loo- look at this crazy stuff going on with the suited connectors. I don't know about that. Yeah.
Well, any six or five is gonna be good.
Think I'm all in.
Yeah.
Damn, seventy-six trombones.
Yeah, we're over here playing forty chess and he's just got the nuts. So, uh, you might
Five bet my six, five and the Kings.
Yep, it's, it's
All in?
Uh, maybe, maybe you just jam here.
I think it's probably close to jam.
Yeah, surely.
You just don't really care. Like it's the button open and you have an ace.
Oh.
Let it go.
Whenever I jam those stupid offsuit aces, I feel like I run into Ace Jack every time.
I know that feeling. Uh, you just, you just call. Nine handed, uh, so we know what this does under the gun at Chippy V.
I barely blame. Easy fold. Yeah.
Zero EV? Open it at the micros?
Fold.
Oh my god.
The blockers are too good. Now we fold.
They would be here with Ace Jack off.
Dude, snap fold, man. It's under the gun, under the gun one.
Ace Jack and then Ace Queen you just ripped?
Uh, I don't know what I do with Ace Queen. I think twenty big blinds, you just have to put it in, but I think, I don't know. I don't know.
What do you do with Ace five suited here?
Well, blocking the bluff.
Maybe that's our other bluff.
Just under the gun, under the gun one, man. I don't think you're gonna have bluffs really here.
You don't think you're going away with Ace five suited there, Ace four suited? And that Ace Queen off? My real question, what do you do with Ace Jack for this price?
Bro, I'm out. I'm out with Ace Jack.
Ace Jack suited, call?
Maybe Danny, maybe.
Alright.
Still fold? I don't know. That's a gross one.
Ace Queen is kind of where it's drawing the line. Ace Jack suited, okay. But like Ace Jack off, get out of here.
It's just purely linear. So our bluffs are like nines and tens quote unquote bluffs.
Yeah, exactly. Your air quote bluffs are nines and tens and fragments of Ace Jack suited.
Then no Ace five, no Ace four. Hmm.
Some Ace Queen now.
Yeah, Ace Queen. I, I, I'm not gonna lie. I would probably nip it up in real life with Ace Queen, but
Well, depends. Takes, if your opponent is capable, you gotta do something with Ace Queen, you know?
Fair. Yeah, yeah, it's true. Um.
Ooh.
I think I just, I think I just put it in his face. I think I just, I think I just put it in his face.
Yes. Oh, he's nuts. Oh, what happened?
Church.
Not all in.
Not all in?
Oh man, it's so hard for me to do none all in here. I never do it literally like this.
The church.
You're leaving some dollars on the table, Maxi.
Fifty fifty, man. You gotta play. Here, I would not play.
You can let this go.
It seems like that when ICM starts becoming a factor, we don't shove as deep as we do in Chippy V.
Well, that's right. Like even twenty five big blind seems to be a big stack.
Um. I would call this a logical expansion, but yeah, I'm not, I don't think you're supposed to VPip this.
You lose a little deep.
You, you could do it with king six though, right?
Yeah, I honestly, I just kinda treat like, in my mind, the difference between a six, three, four, five is really not much.
Well, let's get it in now.
Just a frequency selector for me.
Let it go.
Ain't gonna do it.
Let it go.
Are you sure?
Oh.
What about?
He's got twenty bigs, man.
Okay, what do you do with king queen off?
Call.
What do you do with king jack off?
Mix bulge.
Eh, I think he's still probably call, he might start three betting a little bit more.
Do you ever three bet this guy with high offsuit combos?
High offsuit combos.
At our near this jack ten.
King queen off will three bet some and king jack off.
Nah, jack.
I think jacks are, I think jacks are pretty good, so like king jacks probably good. Uh, king tens probably alright. I don't know, stuff like that sometimes. Not really, I don't do a bunch of it. I feel like king queen's just too good. Nah, it's, it's doing it a lot. It's doing it a lot, actually.
Better fold. What's the EV of three bet king jack?
That easy.
Those are just frequencies, you'd have to find a button to click. Yeah, that button.
This jam and the king jack suited, can you hover the king jack off again? Oh.
Everything was point zero eight.
Now I wanted to see how close it, how, how like minus EV king jack off was.
Was zero.
Minus point oh one, okay. It's close.
It's better to three bet it than call. It's pretty funny. Um.
Makes sense.
Yeah, just fold.
What's the worst taste you jam here? What do you do? And ace five is way out of line.
Way out of line?
First cut.
Offsuit with talking, right?
Yeah.
In Chippy V, you jam these all, right?
Why, why would you jam ace five off?
He can make a straight.
I think you're not wrong, Galen. I don't know if it's in here, here, but can't be far off.
Ain't, ain't got no ace five off here.
Ace, ace eight off plus and maybe ace five island.
In case nine, oh goodness.
There you go.
The ace five off, so.
Yeah.
We use the big stack too, right? So it's only fifty percent.
I was like there.
You're not wrong there.
Get these way wrong too.
I think it's just, uh, I don't know, if you, like, you can be very aggressive versus cutoff and button. In these scenarios.
Yep. Small blind off suit ace, under twenty bigs versus butt off, button or cutoff, you can kinda go crazy. You, you get to have a lot of nice game overs early, you know, instead of blinding down to four chips.
Well, that was fun. Rebuy.
What are you gonna do with, right?
Gotta find some of it.
What do you do here with queen jack suited?
Play a call.
Wanna call queen jack?
Yep.
What do you do with queen ten?
Fold. It's probably still a call, queen ten suited.
What about? That army?
Queen, queen ten suited?
Jack ten suited.
Jack ten suited, it's probably still a call. We might wanna four bet, don't we, don't we fold jack ten?
Bros, we're under the gun. We're under the gun and nine handed at that.
Yeah, tax are pretty tight range. Then there's short stacks. I don't know about jack ten suited.
You might, you might four bet something like that every once in a while, but I don't know, man, I.
Ten suited, are you insane?
I'm not a fan of, I, I mean, I am a nit under the gun. I, I don't do any of this stuff, I play it very ABC. So king ten is kinda like where it's getting excited. King jack is really the one. That's getting excited, but I mean.
Small.
I'd rather four bet jack ten suited than king jack.
I think like in real life, I, I think these are almost just like fairy tale ranges sometimes. People don't mess around with under the gun like that.
Yeah.
So, looking at the response and playing the aggressive nodes is, uh, pretty dangerous, I think.
Oh, easy fold.
Um. I think I call here sometimes. I think I call here a lot, actually.
Yep.
He's actually mixing a healthy amount of folding.
Another was three betting most of the time. Am I wrong?
It was doing a lot of folding. It was a, uh, how do you call it? A cheeseburger?
Oh, that's okay.
I'm flicking a chip.
Just one, right?
Speaking of which, I just three bet queens and fifty percent ICM, thirty effective and got fucking two flats. What?
Very nice.
The shit is not real.
You, you won't see that in the theory books, will you Danny? Uh, I'm folding.
A sideboard.
I'm folding.
Man, folding is normal.
Um.
I am out.
Easy fold.
Out.
Okay, what pair do you call? What, what about eights?
Ooh, eights is a hard question.
Nines or?
Nah, I think ace plus.
I think.
You folding sevens here.
I think so, I think so, yeah.
Wha- what's the worst pair that he's ripping?
All of them, nine big blinds.
Um.
Fives.
I would think fives or sixes is gonna be his floor.
Sevens or eights should be ours.
Yeah, I'm thinking we're drawing the line at eights and nines is full frequency calling.
Yeah, nine for sure, eights for sure. Sevens, I don't know. So if I don't know, probably a better fold. Right?
Let's, yeah, let's see what the machine says. I'm kinda, I'm really curious about this.
I'm curious about eights.
Well, remember, there's like, you know, there's a lot of alligators in the water behind you who can wake up with aces.
Exactly. So what's his jam? What's his jam look like? Fours. Alright, I, I feel pretty good about that as a group. We were fairly dialed in here.
Heart.
You don't got the heart, Danny.
Never give it to me.
Alright, we all know what the theory books would tell you to do here.
Lick it, twelve.
Fold?
I think it's just gonna jam it.
You think it's gonna fold or call?
I don't think it's calling, I think it's putting it in his face.
Are you?
Won't it just fold?
I, I like folding.
But thing is, your pretty short here. Look at this size and his stack that, and he's attacking under the gun. Thank you.
We saw this from the other side, right? When we had jacks, the response was like.
Really, the small blind, the small blind is gonna be attacking with all kinds of offsuit garbage, just quick get back at him.
It's magic, okay? We have a suited ace and a suited five, it's just magic. You just. Now, 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 like, we see that the expensive simulator does this, but uh, if you do this in real life, uh, pers. I mean. You're, you're gonna get hurt if you start playing with fire.
You're gonna get hurt. He's gonna show you kings a lot and you're gonna have to crack.
We got thirty percent against kings.
Yeah? Crack it up. Pack it up, crack it up.
Uh, we are like so deep. I, I don't mind three betting this. Calling's good.
I ain't, I think this deep.
Yeah, calling's the way.
It's the effect of the, uh, the guy in the big blind and having ninety nine.
I would also call nines.
Look at, look at the blocker strategy. Yeah, yeah, look at the blocker strategy though, it's just like.
Do you have a nace or a king?
Yeah, that's basically the question.
That you don't want to play.
Cause we're so deep, our head plays well multi-weighted here too.
It does, it does, it does. It's good enough. Fold, I think it's just, it's under the gun, it's just too much, too strong.
You sure?
I think.
I think this is probably a fold.
It's like the floor, you see some frequency, but. Uh, what do we do? Maybe just a, maybe a call or, yeah, I mean, okay.
I ain't calling for, for.
Frank, don't you dare.
I'm folding or three betting.
What, you guys crazy? You got a suited ace and, and the, uh, almost, you almost have a button.
If Frank said fold, I'm folding.
He did say fold.
Right.
Okay. Look at you, bunch of solvers. I'm a fish.
Yeah. Frank is a net. I listen to the net sometimes.
Um. I don't three bet this combo, but I have a feeling it might be.
Okay, so let's say you have king ten and king jack.
No, like cut, cut off, uh, bottom opening range of offsuit and this nine ace and you don't want to call the nine, yeah, so we folded.
Right, they should be opening more than the nine.
What about?
Offsuit.
Offsuit.
I'm convinced, Frank, you said it with such conviction, how could I ever argue with that?
Never doing that, Frank said not to, alright? Now, king ten and king jack.
King ten, king, king, uh, hmm. Okay, like, maybe some three betting.
Or daddy here.
King ten and king jack fifty percent three betting because you don't wanna play an off and multi.
That is, so we're basically mama.
And it's one of those things, you're not too tore up if he comes, eh, too tore up about letting the cards go if he comes over the top. Maybe king ten, king jack.
Yeah, do you think king ten off still gets flats here in, in fifty percent?
I think.
I, I think. I think it would come out. I think it's gonna be a majority fold with some fragments of three betting. Oh, eh, well, it still costs quite a bit, actually.
Fifty fifty.
Still pretty good.
Hey, let's get.
Don't.
Never lose. It's too big blind, have to. There's no way we fold.
It's not what you're thinking, man. If you look, she, she's got an Adam's apple, it's not what you're thinking.
But. I'm, I'm, I probably fold here.
Get out of here, man. You don't want it, you're on the.
You can, you can.
Ninety-five percent of the flops are gonna have three overcards?
I think you can.
What if there's a lose on the flop?
Yep, it's not what you're thinking, man.
We're cut off though, and we're, yeah, 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 you can.
Sometimes you have to go with the Adam's apple.
You don't have to, but. Why not try something new?
Listen, you gotta travel.
Do we ever?
Experience everything.
I like to just fold here.
Bro.
Two weeks ago, I was three betting this like pure.
It's the button. I am not giving out my button. I've got two face cards, I'm not just handing my button over to this, this, this joker.
I think it's a meatless burger.
It's a meatless burger. Some buns, alright, I like that, that's good.
Wanna eat some buns, Danny?
He's going.
Top bun or bottom bun? What are you going for?
Oh.
I want the sesame seeds.
Hey, meatless burger.
Meatless burger. Is that a vegan burger?
Yeah.
Alright.
I forgot the patty. Now we got twenty big blinds.
What would a vegan do?
You look inside, it's just mustard.
Mustard.
Uh.
Vegan mustard.
Get out of here, fold.
Hey, what about king jack off?
Fifty percent three bets, maybe.
Oh, Arnie, Arnie is ready.
Not that high versus UTG two.
Yeah, I would be a little more respectful versus UTG two.
I'd be more of a flat.
Yeah, I do like, I do like VPipping though.
Three betting, but.
I do like VPipping.
Yeah.
Yeah, fifty percent three bet, but also hamburgers full.
Yeah, it's still, actually, it's very aggressive still.
Forty, forty-five? Alright.
You just really don't wanna play a, a hand, uh, three ways with it.
No, I'm not gonna flat it, I just muck it.
It's all right.
I think you just, I think you just put it in, man.
I think it's gotta go in.
Hmm. You're gonna call? Yeah, we can let it go. Alright, shenanigans. You can definitely three bet this guy.
Daddy's in the big, daddy's in the big blind here, we're gonna be respectful a little more.
Forty-three point six percent is respectful.
When daddy's in the big blind, I wanna three bet more, cause I don't want him calling.
Yeah, let him know. Stay out of your lane.
Well, I, I got this one.
Calls with the fives?
Um, you gotta VPip. Now, I don't like three betting, I don't think. I would just call.
I was called.
Play a student hand in position? This is, this is ideal.
Yeah, what do we three bet here with? Big stack against big stack?
Ace and king, so you're gonna see a lot of king seven, king six, king nine, ace five, ace four, ace three.
Ace five, okay, any king seven, yeah?
Yeah, 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 I think that region definitely lights up.
And we're gonna target the, uh, the, the offsuit tens, so we're gonna use like the nines and eights and sevens.
Queens plus.
Yeah, nines and eights and sevens with blockers.
No king.
The ones, the ones I don't find are those little suited connectors.
Can you go back to it for a sec, Lou? Huh.
Lot of calling from this region.
What's interesting, Danny?
Um, I don't know, I was kinda just looking at the suited kings. We saw this in a different one versus EP where it didn't like the six and seven, but I thought.
What I like about this is like board coverage, one, two, three, five, six, and then bam, seven, eight, and then nine. Also, you can kind of build it up like that.
Well, yeah, so when you three bet this guy, he's just not gonna have representation on those low boards. I think that's part of the, and you're unblocking the folds, like there, there's a lot of good reasons to take the high lows. Um, I don't know if I wanna be three betting the suited ones from the stacked up because he can four bet jam. Um.
Uh, big blind, right?
Yeah, I think you wanna call for the big blind.
Yep. All your offsuit trash ones.
I was, I was wondering about jamming. Look at jamming, jamming's waking up a little bit.
No, 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 no. What about ace four offsuit?
Yeah, you can three bet that. Ace four, the off suits are definitely gonna be shenanigans.
You would wanna try under the gun too with your ace four?
Yeah, it's gonna pull from those. I'm fairly confident.
The HUD says it works about fifty percent of the time.
Woo. Buckle up.
Buttercup.
Okay, so here you are.
I, I think this is gonna be mostly a fold.
Oh, no.
It's a six, man.
It's a call.
It's a call, but I hate it keep calling her.
Um, I'm, I'm mucking bros.
It's gonna. It's gonna mix, right? I don't think it's pure call.
Look at this.
Yeah, 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 it's a mix. It's, it's the ace of spades. That's, that's what it is.
Oh, yeah, Arnie nailed it. I mean, you have the spade, so I mean, obviously. Makes perfect sense now.
Does that mean, what about with, with Ace three there?
You know what I do in game here?
You throw it and they're faces, right?
I limp, is what I do here in game.
This is a raise fold, maybe, or no?
Bro, I limp this hand right here every time in this scenario.
Oh, my goodness.
I think at, at eleven, it's probably gonna be a fold.
Too many alligators in the water.
King Jack? Let's see. Oh, he just calls. Ace four off, you have like the perfect.
Hmm, this might be a reasonable combo to three bet. I don't know. Do we want the nine here, Pete, or do we not want the nine?
Yeah, maybe.
Eh, that's gonna be probably towards the bottom of his range. Probably gonna pick Queen eight to three bet. I would probably call.
I think it's like you don't wanna have a Jack or a ten, so Queen and nine is pretty slick. This is spot on, is it? I think.
You hear what Pete's saying, though, like he'll have some. Some Ace nine off, some, some King nine suited.
He's got no one.
So this is actually like from the ranges we've studied, this is, this is UTG one, because this is nine max that we're looking at here, yeah? So I don't hate the nine. Think he's gonna be centralized. I mean, it's gonna like, maybe an eight a little bit better, but I think nine's still gonna be popular.
You think Queen eight is in there? I think Queen eight is also in there.
I think so. I think Queen eight's gonna be better than Queen nine.
No?
A fold, hundred percent.
You need, you need to be closer to the button, I guess.
Might not been there, actually.
Queen nine is not in there. King eight.
Picking the queens, really.
Not really. It, it's just the ICM effect, like you just won an ace or a king. Like, we're over here playing games.
Yeah, it's.
Trying to three bet this guy. No, man, we need a nace.
Well, it's also different too, like nine-handed, right? So most of the time, we're playing eight-handed online. Except for final tables.
Congrats on your, uh, your little final table the other day, Arnie. You saw what he got, Louis.
Thank you, took second?
Yeah, he took second in the, uh.
I'm still shooting myself for calling it off with. King high, but.
Eh, you did, you did good, man.
Sixteen big blinds to eighty when we got the heads up, so it was like, uh.
You did good. Eh, I could take it or leave it here. I'm not three, I don't wanna three bet. He's, he's under the gun one, he's only got twenty-two bigs.
What are you gonna do?
I don't wanna torch my equity with a suited ace. I'm gonna fold and call.
Yeah, I'm gonna probably fold here.
Three betting was better than calling for what it's worth.
What about Ace five suit then?
There you go, there you go, Louis. Five, five.
No stuff?
No, 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 no.
No, no, we're just, yeah, three betting here, yeah.
Calling?
Um, maybe some shenanigans sometimes. I think I just. Maybe. Mostly the call.
Mostly call, yeah.
Easy fold. Easy fold?
Yep.
Hundred percent.
Easy fold?
Well, how about we do twenty percent ICM now?
Crank it up.
Near bubble?
Wow.
Twenty-five is fine. Near bubble, or twenty-five or near bubble. I mean, it's gonna, you're gonna see.
I think we spend most of the time either fifty percent ICM or twenty-five percent ICM. Like near the bubble or just.
So twenty-five percent of the field, you might fold this, because you don't cover anyone, really. And.
Still an open.
What, what's five's doing?
Six is zero, then fold five straight.
Five's is probably gonna hamburger.
There you go, okay.
Or like a popsicle.
Melted popsicle. Been sitting out in the sun too long. Alright, click your call.
Oh, that raise. I still don't wanna raise.
Easy fold, I think.
Even from the big blind? I think it's, we're gonna probably have to call. If they're playing their polarized range, really, right?
Arnie, that's the million dollar question, right?
Well, there's not much.
We are against the machine, so he's gonna probably have that polarized range, right? So.
Yeah, if, if.
Like, just close your eyes and call down? Like, what's the plan? You're, the SPR is gonna be one. There's gonna be an overcard. Then I guess it's, if we're gonna play it, we should probably just jam it.
I mean, you, you do have position, so it's. There are some lines he's gonna take where you're gonna be able to realize your equity, but I don't know. I, I'm kinda with you. Like, I'm not messing around with that.
Then it, then it just comes down to the, the pre-flop where we don't wanna get involved with sixes. Right, we're trapping, we're, we're trapping against his queen four. Let him bluff it off.
Um, do you ever call is the question?
I think you call often here, no?
Um, I think I might, I, I think I like jamming more, but I think, I see merit in calling sometimes, maybe? No, like the EV is just hugely different, actually.
Because we're under the gun.
His ace is calling.
Yeah, his range is tighter.
No calling ranger.
No call.
Cause of positions.
Yep.
If we're lowjack, we probably call.
If he's button and we're lowjack, probably.
Yes.
Oh, my goodness.
Scammed. Uh, yeah, just put it in, whatever, six big blinds. Good joker trying to knock us out. Fold.
Okay, sevens?
Oh, man.
Probably a jab.
Bro, I'm, you know what I'm doing with sevens? I'm limping. Anytime you ask me a hard question and I'm, and I'm like. I'm just gonna tell you I'm limping.
Oh, it's still just, we're not, we don't have any jams at thirteen. I'm surprised, like even, you think we'd wanna even with like an ace, jack or something, right? Get some fold equity or something.
Nine-handed, right? And first act, there's just a lot of guys who can wake up with a hand.
Yeah, it's true.
That's the biggest thing with this nine-handed, it's just really throwing me through a loop. Reason, don't fold. I think that's just a call.
Suited combo, bro. Just click a call.
Okay, okay.
Uh, we're way deep. You can definitely V pip here.
How?
Uh, I don't wanna pay the guy twenty big blinds because he's raising into the entire table with his aces, so I'm just calling.
What about eights?
Same story. I might start raising tens, okay?
Nines, you're calling nines?
Probably, man.
Seems wild.
Maybe tight, I don't know.
Do we have much incentive, really?
Yeah.
With those smaller pairs?
It's like eights?
Nines is, okay, yeah, maybe I'm a little tight on that side, but, um. I kinda, that's kinda how I feel. Like, this range is gonna be, this range needs to be tight that he's opening.
Right, cause he's opening under twenty. You know, all these big stacks, the left of them, right? Like.
That's the consideration.
We've got a big stack. Do we really need to even gamble?
I wanna jam here.
Wow, bro, don't, don't bubble the tournament, man.
Just rice.
Well, I think, uh, we raise, we don't raise tens, tens has to jam, no?
I'm thinking probably a jam here, yeah.
I like caller jam.
You can't just call, can you?
Bro, you guys are gonna shoot yourself in the foot.
It's late position against late position.
Yeah, but it's twenty-five percent. I think it's like seventy percent call, thirty percent raise five.
Twenty-five percent, he can't call that much, right? It's a big portion of his stack.
Maybe we can't. Look at the stacks behind too. Is it, do you just wanna pure raise five then?
I just wanna put it in his face. Am I wrong?
I'm with you. Isn't it too much?
I think he just has aces and then we're just out, right?
I don't.
I don't know, bro.
I'm on a desperate jam here, but if he shows me aces, it's like, oh.
Louis, remember at, uh, fifty percent ICM, twenty-five bigs, there was no jamming, although that wasn't late. Late, personally, but. This is even higher ICM, I feel like there's not gonna be jamming.
It's very estimated, actually.
Yeah, we induce.
Okay, so we figured it out. To that small, and then. He's tough, there we go.
Yeah.
Why are we gonna call it off?
Should've called.
Well.
Yeah, what are you gonna do, man? I don't know what the hell to do here.
He's got nines. He's gonna have nines. Come on, Ace five suited, we're gonna hold.
Ah, yeah, 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 yeah. Call, fine.
This is like we dug ourselves a grave and then we just. Either slip in it or. Put somebody else in it.
Are you ready, are you ready to take a, you ready to take a dirt nap?
We got what we wanted. Sort of.
Oh, my.
Yeah, GG.
A big stack bully on the bubble, though.
How could we bubble, man?
How could this have happened to me?
I lost already.
We're here to win.
You bet, induce.
Induce? Four.
Induce. I wanna go nine.
Um, yeah.
Wait, do we ever just call?
I think it's okay. We're deep enough to three bet.
It's twenty-five percent.
You're right.
Hmm.
I guess there's, there, there'll be enough flops where. They're gonna be three under.
Well, we do, we don't do well against a four bet, right?
No, you don't. You're toast against a four bet.
And you gotta continue against a four bet, do you?
There's no way you're, I don't think you're ever folding this twenty-five percent of the field.
Probably what's going on here, right?
Well, that's why, yeah, that's why you flat, right? Cause you don't wanna be in that scenario.
Queens.
Well, even queens are pure.
Queens, Ace, King, look at Ace, King, Queens.
Yeah, this is the.
Church?
This is the.
I flat Ace King here.
Against a four bet, so they wanna flat a lot.
Look how polar, look how polar this is. It wants to raise King deuce. And like Ace three off, Ace five off, but we're flattening. Jacks and queens.
The ladies.
It's high ICM and doesn't wanna play a four bet pop.
Ladies are calling here.
I don't know, there's gonna be a lot of flops, we can just continue and just let them. See bet and then see bet.
You know, the problem is, you know what his response is versus a three bet? He basically just stuffs every suited ace in your face.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that makes sense.
So. Yeah, enjoy.
Can we see that?
Yeah, I don't think he is. He's not. At all. He just.
Not every suited ace.
But what he does shove, it's a hundred percent.
Four bet, right? Eighteen.
Yeah. There, there are no shoves from that spot, it looks like, right?
Just at, just the church.
Oh, oh, I, you're purple.
If it was a final table.
Here, Louis, can we see the red here?
If it was a final table, though, Louis.
The red, what?
The range. Which range?
The King three off, which we, King three suited, which we folded from high jack.
Oh, oh, not this one, the, the next one, Louis?
Next one, yeah. Next hand. Yeah, this one.
So hijack. Was either hijack or cutoff.
Yeah, it was hijack.
What do you wanna do with your king?
Just want to see the range. Okay. Yes. Just to see what do we three bet here from the title.
They were cut off.
Super ace blocker oriented.
Our cutoff is too short. Oh, my goodness, what have I done? We're back. Pocket tree. I call.
I think we're gonna call. I wanna fold.
Deuces and trees, right? Are the worst.
Chips are starting to get too valuable here.
Yeah, deuces and trees. You can call the rest, but. This is just a fold. I would fold here. What about you guys?
Yeah, I would fold too.
Kind of range do we rock here? Pretty tight, right?
Probably want Ace and a King in our hand with.
Jack then suited.
Preferably both. Both, yeah.
Good tens off, two queens.
That's a gross spot. Yeah. I think we call and beat Ace nine. I folded, go stand in the corner for a rotation.
And then, what do you do with it? Ace eight offsuit.
Still probably a call. I don't think we, we can fold. What to see here from him?
Ace seven offsuit.
Jack eyes, ten highs, queen highs.
Depends. You're on the bubble, man, he's not.
I think it's gonna be like threes, fours. What else? Is he doing it with Ace three off here? He's probably jamming all his aces here.
Gonna, he's gonna be shoving the boomerang. Of, of suited garbage. We're just way ahead.
On the bubble?
I don't think his shove range is very wide here.
Ethan, what do you do with Ace seven?
Call.
Dude, I'm not folding.
Whoa, no, no, no. Ace seven. I think it's a fold. Oh, I don't know, man. I know we're against the machine here, but. But, uh, it's mostly player dependent, I think.
Ace, five, a suited plus, and then like. Ace eight off.
You fold Ace seven?
It's close. I feel like it's the line. It might call some.
I call Ace seven.
It's twenty bigs, man. We can't let this guy run its over though, too, right?
What if Frank calls Ace seven?
Let's do this. Look at, why don't you look at the small blind jamming range and let's see if that changes some opinions?
No.
No, you gotta figure it out on your own.
Gotta figure it out first. Powerful, Ace seven.
Bro, I'm calling, I'm calling Ace ten here all day, but Ace seven is like, eh, maybe close. Ace five suited plus. Look at this, look at this. Pretty good, pretty good.
I'm surprised that we're folding fives.
Pretty good on the Ace seven. Let's see what the jam range is, though.
Never fade, Peter.
Look at this. If you know the guy's doing this, these shenanigans.
Alright.
See the boomerangs in there.
Every time I did it with King five.
It turns out horribly for you, huh?
I remember.
What nationality is the small pipe?
Yeah, that's a good question. Re- relevant question, Arnie. Relevant question.
Estonia.
If he's in the chat typing vamos, vamos.
Estonians, I'm not folding. Israelis, I'm not folding. Brazilians, I'm in there.
I'm Estonian, what the fuck?
Yeah, that's, that's right, Maxi. No respect for you guys.
Really bad breath from your country, you know?
He only falls on Canadian nets.
I actually shove any two.
Exactly.
I should adjust.
Yeah, you Austrians too. I'm calling you guys too.
Is, I think this is just gonna, I don't think we're gonna have any jabs, but I wanna, I wanna go all in here. We might have, uh, this is a little different than the other one, right? Cause we're gonna be out of position, right? I think we do just jam.
I'm kind of in gym, I, I, I would probably jam this in game.
We're gonna bust the bubble, he just has ace game.
Uh, yeah, well.
He might, he might, he can have what?
Six and then play twenty.
Maybe with suited, you induce.
There's a hand that's gonna jam, it's gonna be this one.
We're bluffing.
It, value jam.
Seven in the fire here, I'm sorry, it's gonna be a race. We're on the bubble.
I'm with, I'm LP to be honest. I'm, I'm raising this, I'm not shoving.
Vamos, vamos, all in.
Geez, I ain't.
Alright, so like, tell me this, you click this little, you click this fancy little six button and he calls. What are you doing at that point?
You know what?
Then we get like a ten, eight, seven flop and then.
Perfect, whatever.
You're playing low S P R covered. In a high I C M spot at a position.
What a strong hand.
Okay, that's, that's fair, I mean. Uh, cause yeah, you don't really feel good when you get called, right? Cause what are you getting called by? Probably better.
Jamming twenty seven bigs, come on.
Yeah, it's small blind risk cutoff, it's okay, you're allowed.
You sort of wanna run the equity on the five cards.
Cause the suited triangle wants it.
Look at the church.
Okay, like the church, eh, I, you could feel strong enough, confident enough.
What? Why? That seems worse.
Cause you.
Cause.
Yeah.
They're, they're too strong to fold the stack. Right, when you get. When you get uh, four bet. Right, they just wanna realize their equity.
Alright, let's put it in and go broke on the bubble.
Vamos.
Oh.
Go back to the range, Louis.
He calls with his ace jack, wow.
Give us, give us the six and then give him the jam. Let's just make sure. Is that sliver? Are we now gonna fold that sliver? Or are we calling it off but folding ace jack?
Calling ace jack seems insane.
Yeah.
Holy crap.
It does, that's insane.
But that's why it's a little wider here.
Dude, even very, like, if you look at the cutoff's range, like, he's got fragments of stuff that just destroys ace jack.
They've gotta be jamming like, like suited aces, like mad men, right? Or even like jamming their king, queen suited, king jacks.
I never are, but you know.
There's no way, did we see his jam range?
Yeah, click all, click that, look at it. Oh, well, actually, I take that back, you're very competitive versus.
You also notice there's a huge difference in how much we print with ace queen versus ace jack here.
Oh, it's huge, yeah, point six four.
Well, no, on like for our side, it was like point four four to one point four one. Ace queen's just too strong. That's garbage.
Old. I'm probably just folding this. It's probably just gonna be a, the jab?
I don't think it's ever, I don't think it's ever raised, so. I think I'm gonna three bet this. I guess you have to jam though, right? There's not much. I was gonna say, I don't, I don't think.
It's gonna probably be that, the fold or the jam.
I'm folding.
It's not a bad fold.
Oh, wants us to raise?
It does want us to throw that, that's interesting.
The three, I guess it's a three bet fold. He jams, right?
Yeah. What was the spot with ace queen? We had more blinds, right? Um, in a later position open?
Oh yeah, it was a very different spot.
Okay, I was just, I was just wondering like. Why is it three betting here, but it's not, but it's shoving in the other spot? And. It's still shoving here with ace queen and ace jack, it's just.
The difference between, between the other spot is the position of the razor, if he's cut off or button, I think we're more, a lot more inclined to jam. Low jack or E P, we're more respectful.
Gotcha. So yeah, three bet fold.
There's no shame in folding. This is a three bet.
Yeah, I don't think king, queen is ever really just like a flat call, oh, king, queen offsuit is just a call, I'm pretty sure it's a razor, a fold.
I think it's a mix.
Or, but I'm pretty sure, is it for offsuit?
Yeah, because you make a pair, you're still pretty happy.
Fifty percent three bet, forty percent call. Okay.
I'm curious. Yeah.
Wow.
This is probably a spot where you wanna be more polar. On your king, that like.
Well, we probably dominate a lot of his range there with the king, queen.
Because I, I tried to remember what. Peter once said here. Like you keep. The, you're not gonna get a better king to fold when you three bet here. So you wanna three bet the king five, the king four. Cause then you get a better king quite easily to fold. That's the idea.
Oh, okay.
That makes sense, yeah. Cause we're probably had so much of his range here with the king, queen.
Yeah.
So then if a king comes, like, he's gonna go crazy with like his king. Nines, king tens.
Yep.
And we just have him dominated then from that point, so.
He's gonna have lots of like. Queen tens, queen jacks. It just sucks a three bit fold. And we can't call it off. I mean, here. Here, obviously, we call it off.
That's a snap call.
This is tough spot here.
Okay, okay, so what's the worst ace we call here?
Uh, we already looked at this, right?
Seven?
I thought it was ace.
Look at this.
Went two big blinds deeper, so ace eight.
Look at this guy.
So many small stacks here, though.
This is not bubble, huh?
This is one table of money.
Exactly.
You don't wanna go broke before the four.
No.
It's not an F T, man.
Yeah, I mean, it's ten percent to the bubble, it's three hundreds people or two hundred people seem.
Yeah.
So, twenty people more?
Yeah, twenty five percent left. Half worth of the money, what do we do with ace seven now?
Yeah, there's still uh, six other tables, right?
Ace seven, I think we're still have to call.
It was the floor on the other one.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
One pip?
Yep.
Let's see. Or one pip tighter? No?
Okay.
Oh.
Or wider.
It's two bigs, no matter, huh?
Or a pip wide, or two. Couple of pips wider.
King, queen off, fold.
But you're gonna find a king ten suited. Good luck with that.
Cause we perform better versus the underpayers or, yeah.
Luck with the queen ten suited here as well.
King, queen, we're behind all his ace rag, we dominate fewer. King X. He's only jamming like king jack suited, king ten suited.
I bet he's feeling great after we called him with his. Ten eight.
Probably. So two to six to fold.
Hundred percent.
Clicking up.
Oh, you're this dirty.
Bastard.
Oh.
Hmm. Pretty high frequency call here.
Probably just a call here, I don't know if we wanna build a pot.
You don't want to get four bet jammed here with this hand.
Yeah, that's, he's a lot shorter than us, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You don't want no smoke against him.
See, Louis, you're over here looking at the four big blind stack and then the other table has four stacks of eighty bigs on there. We gotta be able to compete with them.
Yeah. King seven. Win five, what are we call?
Bull.
Yeah.
Two broadways, man, I don't know.
Offsuit, right handed?
I don't know, yeah. It's two face cards, man, who cares? Uh, this is a fold.
Oh, wait. Oh, no. Raise small.
Raise small?
Yeah.
Call.
Guess sixteen.
Actually.
Raise, we're gonna get away. Maybe if the other, the other two, the other two uh, jam behind us, we can fold. Let's say a small blind and button jams. We have an easy fold with ace queen there, I think. And so what we shot that, we never shot anything besides aces or what?
Church?
Don't think we have jam range.
We definitely have a jamming room.
Not with this.
Uh, I mean, if we have a jam range, this is in it, right? This is like a hand. We probably might even be jamming. Ace jack. Offsuit? Calling ace. Jack suited, ace. Queen suited? I could see this being a spot.
You think it's a break even spot, Frank?
I think ace, ace jack off is break even, I think it's just raise.
Okay, what do you do? Squeeze here a little bit with ace queen?
Yeah.
We still have a lot of poker, we still have a lot of poker to play, right?
I like a squeeze. Well.
I mean, I guess.
Yeah, I guess. We're in.
Jack, what do you do?
I think so.
Probably gonna crawl in at the. To the jam, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, it's a twenty five percent, huh, it's call.
Let's look at our original response.
Majority fold with his jack.
Can you look at what a jamming edge is there uh, on the, on the last hand? Wh- wh- what, what hand should we jam?
A whole bunch of stuff, the pairs and.
Oh, wow.
That's, that's his range.
That's his.
Okay. So we need.
Can we say ours?
Yeah.
Ours after you.
To the left. Uh, the, the raise five spot. Yeah.
Everything. The church.
Very little.
I don't have enough king, queen suited.
Either.
East king.
I. I don't know about that king jack suited, though.
I don't know, but I have too many pens. Too many jacks, uh, bucket jacks, I ain't, I'm just shipping his face, no? Bucket nine definitely not making it five on it.
You kind of have to consider the stacks behind and what their depth is as well. And like, that plays into whether we wanna induce or just stuff it.
Uh. You gotta call it off. Okay. Call a four bet. Bucket eights. Sounds like.
I, I, that just sounds like a way to lose money, I don't know.
I don't know, his only response is to fold or jam, I don't think he can ever call.
Oh, we got scam. Just a fold. Raise for two. So what about ten lines suited?
I'm pretty sure that's just a flat, oh wait, no, I don't know, he has nine blinds.
Yeah.
I sort of wanna call and scam him, but I think we're folding here. Well.
Are you supposed to scam, what about jack ten suited, Arnie?
Jack ten suited, I think I'm going to. Call hundred percent, I think.
I don't know what I would do with it.
You guys call here, you're just dangling your foot in the water for the big blind to squeeze jam.
You're just. Calling here, right? This guy's gonna jam any flop, this guy's probably gonna jam before the flop.
But I don't know, like, the cutoff here, I don't know how many opens he's gonna really have, other than like, maybe aces, kings. Right, like, he should be jamming almost his entire range he's, wants to play.
Well, there, there are also bluffs, they, they, he has bluffs, I think, with like king seven offsuit and king eight offsuit and stuff like that, uh, I think.
Yeah, I think it's fifty fifty jamming and raising.
I mean, I. I.
I'm jabbing my, everything I'm playing in the cutoff with eleven big blinds.
Uh, sure, I, I mean, I don't disagree with you, I'm just saying that I think the machine, though.
Yeah. Machine might say you gotta mix.
You jam your. Suited triangle stuff and then you induce the good and the bad, like queen jack off and aces and. Well, queen jack's good enough to just jam, huh? Alright, ace three off and aces.
Oh, and then. And then, and then, what do we do from the button, right? Yeah. What do we do with queen ten suited? Jack ten suit.
Probably should just fold.
I don't know about folding, honestly. I don't know what to do with them.
What do you wanna make it for? Okay.
Mixing.
Huh.
So you could let it go, it's not a big deal.
But like we said, if we do call, it gives a big blind an opportunity to just jam there or the small blind.
Too tight here.
Now we're calling like pairs that are gonna call off the whole enchilada. You got aces sometimes.
So here's the thing, if you're thinking that you don't have a, a jam, like, if you're just jamming from the cutoff with eleven big blinds. If you wanna construct a range where you don't have jams, you're gonna start with aces, kings and ace king suited. Then you're gonna find bluffs there, and so if you think your opponents are not finding the bluffs and only finding the value to min raise here with. You're just up against a range that contains. Aces, kings and ace king suited, a disproportional amount of time, and in that case, like.
Yeah.
This snap, jack ten suited here, cause you're up against chance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think I would jamble.
Like even here, it's tough spot, right? I wanna, I wanna just. Fold.
Me too.
I, I'm folding.
I know, I, I, I have fold here in this situation, cause I just don't wanna get involved out of position with. And. Okayish good hat? That's not suited?
Raising to five seems uh. By all these low jack, we gotta respect this position. Then we call. Or fold.
No, no, no calls.
You don't wanna call, huh?
It's, it's really gonna be a, a, a raise five or a fold.
Just fold then.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm.
It's like even if we raise five here and he jams, like, we're down to fifteen big blinds and we're just like.
What do you do with? King, queen suited, uh, king, queen off.
I think that one's probably a little bit better to just maybe call and see a flop?
I don't know.
Hammer, huh?
Hammer.
Can't go wrong.
A lot of these times, like, it's, like, I know what the machine wants to do, but it's like in game, it's sort of, a lot of time it's player dependent, right?
For some of them.
The machine gives you this, the base structure and then you adjust it based on how your opponents are playing.
I. Cause there's some opponents, king jack off there, I jam it all day long, but then there's other, you just fold.
The guy's deep pipping forty percent, you gotta hammer that hand.
Yeah.
Guys deep pipping seventeen percent, it's an easy fold. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, online old man coffee, I'm probably folding.
Raising. Raise bluff.
Thing is raising a whole bunch with the ace nine.
And we are quite deep here too, and we are gonna have a lot more fold equity.
TPV, I think this is a jam. On the bubble. I don't wanna jam as much.
I just wanna just call here on the button.
Yeah.
Maybe, no, I don't wanna.
Call and see a flop?
Maybe, you know what, maybe, maybe, no, I don't want.
Cause we're gonna be ahead of a lot of his opening range.
Yeah, that's why I wanna squeeze, no?
Thirty raised, that's a call of.
You gotta squeeze here. You gotta.
Do you want, does this hand wanna face a four bet?
No. Probably not.
Well.
And it's probably gonna have to call off bigs. Like, I don't think we can fold here now if he jams, that just sucks.
I would not call if he jammed. I would fold definitely with ace jack. On the bubble, guys.
Oh, we saw the small blind versus cutoff one, it was inducing a little bit.
Those, hang on.
What are you looking at?
Five?
Raise five and then, yeah.
He is the.
Hi jack, call in.
I'm folding a jack, oh.
Oh, when you.
I think it's a fine.
When you put in a quarter of our stack, I don't know if we can.
The flo- the floor, it's the floor.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of the tough reason why it doesn't wanna face a four bet jam and why it prefers to jam itself.
Look at this, our opponents are not doing this, like, yeah, I agree with Peter, in practice. Either raise, fold and cry, cause they're way too tight when they jam or just put it in, right? Don't have to think about it.
One, two, three, what is that?
A hundred.
What a random number?
A hundred and twenty-three bigs, fold.
Green egg.
I think we should probably call here, yeah.
Big ones.
It's gonna be disgusting to play post flop.
It will. Especially against ace ten. Alright, but two here.
Raise.
Wanna attack him or no?
Probably just gonna fold.
Sure, the aces are amazing.
Uh, this is gonna be a decent one, it's gonna make some calls and some uh, raises.
I think it's a fold here, because if you had ace five, you would call, but I think ace six would have rolled. I don't think it's ever a call, probably folds, might be some raising.
I'm down to raise.
So what are the reasons for, for raising? One, suited a.
The blocker.
Blocker, blah, 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 so that's a good reason? Reasons for not calling, I think you don't wanna piss chips, sir?
Position, U T G against.
Have you were two E P?
Too early as well, yeah.
Oppositions, right, positions, this guy's E P, gotta be respectful, so it's three bet or fold?
Let's guess, how often is it making it five and a half here? I think it, ace four, ace five is gonna be more, or?
Twenty percent.
Twenty, yeah.
What if it's just like that? Percent?
Huh?
That's not my guess, but it, it could be.
I'm doing it every now and then.
It is eighty percent, oh my god, wow, unreal.
Every now and then.
I've, I've been becoming a nit the last couple of weeks, just don't wanna get involved with average hands.
I'm sure Arnie, you're becoming a nit.
Oh, you'd be surprised how I've, I've changed my game.
Don't, don't, Arnie, we've seen you play here, alright?
Alright.
It's gonna be a long way before you become a nit. Oh, fold here.
Yeah.
I said more of a net.
There's no way.
Think he just called you loose.
And just a call?
Yeah.
A little bit of brace, I mean, hundred percent.
Well, I guess he'd be in so short, right? Like, it's probably best to just realize, you know?
You wanna put him to the.
Raise?
So crazy.
Well, we, this is a good hand we can call off with too.
So crazy.
I just don't know why we'd go to seven.
Probably to get the big blind out.
Cause we're out of position.
Yeah.
But most of all of our, our raises have been, haven't been that big. Or just we are, I maybe missed that.
We make it seven, so our puddles are better to call if he jumps.
Man, you call. That's not good.
That's how we justify it?
Yeah. We laid down good odds, so we call with most of our range. Or all of it, how about that?
It's so crazy, because I think under the gun was a little bit deeper than he was, I don't think we really have a, a squeeze there.
That's fine, I'm agreeing with you, but we're just on the bubble and we're trying to.
He's got the aces.
Oh.
I think raise and then call off.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Uh, no. Fold. So where do we stand with queen ten suited?
His fault?
It's still probably a fold.
Queen jack suited.
If he falls.
I'm probably still folding.
King queen off.
Both fold.
Probably still fold.
Probably king queen suited is the bottom.
Ace ten off.
Ace ten off call.
All fold.
It's probably, it's close, but I don't know, do we really wanna? Get involved and possibly lose half our stack at this point?
We're on the bubble there.
Right on the bubble? Oh no, we're, we're still a little ways away for twenty-five percent.
Oh, okay, sure.
Ten people there. Ace ten.
And king queen? Yeah, king queen. King queen suited too. Zero E.
Yeah. Very interesting, right?
Yeah, our opponent's gonna be jamming enough worse aces that we're gonna be okay.
Fold.
Hey, what do you do here with king queen off?
Also fold, against U T G especially.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Even king queen suited is a fold.
No.
King queen suited jam, king queen off. Ugh.
Uh, king queen off plays very poorly against uh, EP open.
What are you doing with king jack suited?
Folding.
Gotta rip?
Jam king queen and king jack suited, probably.
I thought king queen suited, king jack suited.
King jack's not, it's too tight.
It's mixing, thank.
We're short though, I don't know. Yeah. Fold king queen. All the way down to sixes, huh?
Low calling range. What they then?
I'm not finding queen jack suited there ever.
Oh, I am also.
Really, pocket eights plus.
Fold, suited would be a race, suited we are raising, I guess.
Just check back.
Back suited.
Yeah.
Do that, yeah. I'm, my best, most good stuff, just check back. Uh.
So more or less like in a chipper V.
Yeah.
Again.
We're going polar, raising our best stuff and our worst. And boom, all of the keys.
And aces.